Seven o'clock meetings, and I'm sitting home thinking about stuff that we should be doing. And all of a sudden, my phone rings for my colleague, and I find out I'm late for my own meeting. Okay, welcome, everybody. We do have some things to say. We're still moving along with the process. I did invite a guest to come tonight, but the person was supposed to be here. I had to call because County Executive Kittleman called him to do another program. So, the good news is that we made contact with County Executive Kittleman. He was very receptive to hearing about what we had to say. So, my colleagues and myself had lunch with them the other day, and they took the information back to him. And I got a phone call late on Friday afternoon, and the answer was that he wanted to sign a letter, co-sign a letter with me, to go to CSX. And that's the black hole we've all been trying to get into. And so, it looks like we're finally going to get there. I had a phone call this afternoon, as I said, and Mr. Kittleman is going over with his staff the letter that we drafted and sent to him to try and start the process off. So, it seems like that everything's moving in the right direction. Hopefully, in the next day or so, we'll get an answer back from him as to how he wants that process to take place. And we'll then advise you all and make sure that everybody stays in the loop as to how that's going to take place. The letter will be made available to everybody as soon as we get the idea as to what it's going to look like from him. And then, we'll get that to everybody in city. We'll probably put it on our website because we're really, really happy about it. Another thing that's taken place is that Senator Rosenpepp put me in contact with a gentleman by the name of Bradley Frome. And Bradley is the Assistant Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Economic Development and Public Infrastructure for Prince George's County. Ms. Lubinecki is who with us, one of my big advocates here on this program. She was with him when he made a presentation to Secretary Rumm from the MDOT for the state of Maryland. And in that statement, I have it here, he and I spent some time on the telephone talking about this, and he said he would do anything he could do to help us along, and he made this, the statement in this presentation that he made to the secretary. And I'll read it. I'll read the paragraph anyhow. It says, "In addition, while there has been some talk about moving the existing Mark station from Laurel to a nearby location, we," meaning Prince George's County, "do not believe that making that change is a type of magnitude that is prudent or appropriate. As an existing area has grown accustomed to existing station, it would only serve to disturb and reduce the ridership to change its location based on the needs of the developments that seem so far uncertain." So, that was part of his presentation to the secretary. So, we have that. We have the letter that we're preparing for CSX. Myself and Karen Lubinecki, we're preparing another letter that's going to respond to the survey of 268, or the 268, Karen?
268 on October 4th.
Yeah. Of the 800, they only served a little over 200 people with this survey that was, we all agreed, it was skewed, and so, we are responding back to the secretary, the deputy secretary, with that letter. So, with these pieces moving forward and the situation still being fluid, I think it's fair to say we're still on board. We're still in the mix, and we are continuing to meet with MDOT and to bring information back and analyze it. We will have nothing less than a full stop as best as we can, and that's what we've been fighting for, and that's what the county executive from Howard County has agreed to. He wants a full stop over at Laurel Park. We want a full stop here. So, we're saying that to CSX. So, let me stop for a second and ask Ms. Querry, do you have any comments?
Just, I would like Ms. Lubinecki to update everyone on her opinion of the survey, which we share.
You have to, it has to be green.
Some of the same misgivings.
Let me see if it's even on. Let me check it. Why don't you come up here and just use one of these microphones? You look better up here anyhow.
Well, as some of you may be aware, just to give a little background, MDOT did a survey on October 14th down at the train station. And Michael Graver, who's one of the commuters, actually alerted us all to the fact that this was happening. He's a Laurel resident over, a couple streets over. And he kind of alerted us to this. And I know Ed got a copy of the survey, and I was able to get a copy from their communications department. And some of the, the survey basically looked at 268 surveys, and then they, so they looked at attitudes of people towards the train station. And they also scanned all the licenses in the parking lot, which I personally find a little creepy, but that's another issue altogether, to determine the origin of the commuters. And that's really where one of the main two flaws, I think, that we saw in the survey came from, aside from the fact that they only surveyed 268 people out of a group of 800 who generally ride the trains. In the people that they surveyed, by the way, almost 70% said they were comfortable with the station as it is. They wanted some more parking, but they didn't feel, there was not this burning desire to move someplace else, or just, they were pretty satisfied. But the, what they called the origin part of the survey, they said that 53% of the people were from Howard County. Now, those of us who are looking to keep the stop in Laurel realize that that's a pretty high figure. And what we realized when we looked at it is that they were only surveying people in the parking lot, that was the MTA parking lot, and didn't include any of the people who were walking to the station, who were being dropped off at the station, who might have taken public transportation to the station, all the people who were more likely to be living closer to Laurel. So, we wanted to point that out to the secretary, that this was kind of a flawed part of the survey, and a big flaw, by the way. So, that's kind of the, the main issue with the survey. And something I think that we've been talking about is that as we get more development, you know, down in Hawthorne, as many of you are aware, there's a lot more development going down kind of south of Laurel, you know, between the town center new build-out and Hawthorne build-out, which is substantial, and whatever happens over at the, at the open shopping center right now. I know that's kind of in flux at the moment. That means that there's a lot more people who are potential commuters to the current train station for which a move would be really unappealing, shall we say. The Hawthorne one, I mean, I personally walked, I don't know if Jack Brock did it. When I did a MapQuest from Danneman's, it's exactly seven tenths of a mile, which is a little more than a half mile, which is the official Maryland transportation-oriented development distance, but it's really not that much more. So, that means a lot of the people would be conveniently able to go to that. And it is within an easy walk. I mean, it's like a 15-minute walk. I mean, not for everybody, but it's a doable. So, that's kind of the main things with the survey. Okay?
Okay. Mr. Les, you have something to say?
One of the difficulties, it's already been pointed out, is CSX. CSX owns that right-of-way. They own the tracks, they own the right-of-way. And in looking at how the law is structured to allow passenger trains on freight lines, if you go back to the Act of 1970, then there was another piece of it passed in '73, the freight lines are controlling the windows when passenger trains can move over their lines. If you read back in '70, it says that passenger trains are supposed to have priority in those windows. But what happens is, if CSX gets their freight trains screwed up as far as scheduling, they, you know, they push their freight trains over those lines. And there's not a third track, so you can't, you can't put anything on the side, on the side to let a train pass. They've got to coexist. This is an area, I think, that probably, when the letter goes forward, probably should be a discussion point for President Ricks and County Exec Kittleman when they finally engage CSX. Now, all our members, a number bandied around a few years ago, it was a very large number to change this line, the Camden line, to a three-track line. And of course, from the freight perspective, they don't care, except that's where all the money's being made. There are big dollars being made in hauling freight over CSX lines in this country, big dollars. And so, again, I think that something has to be discussed, need to have a better understanding of the windows that they've allocated for passengers. From my perspective, what's the difference whether you have one stop or two stops, as long as you maintain the trains in the window? It shouldn't matter to CSX. But again, they're sitting off on the side. I guess there's been no discussion with them yet. But again, they are, they're not the 800-pound gorilla, but they're the 400-pound gorilla in the corner of the sandbox. And we've got, they've got to be engaged, they've got to have, they've got to have some answers or some suggestions. And the suggestions are not to kick passengers off the Camden line. I mentioned this, that about, I don't know, 15 years ago, Mayor Mo and I went down and met with Senator Cardin, when he became a senator. He's very interested in passenger trains. And at that point, he was pushing to try and figure out if they could in fact get the midday trains on the Camden line. And I guess they felt that the bus going from Odenton to Laurel sufficed, but as soon as the budget crunch came, they cut the buses out. All commuter parking lots from here south are filled. Go over to Odenton, they're parking at the fire department over there. You've got huge parking lots. That's people getting on the Mark train primarily to go to Washington. Thank you, Mr. Ricks.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas, you have anything?
No.
I think the other thing that we've, that we've studied and learned is, and was in the letter that we sent to Mr. Kittleman, is that the station that has been recently built over in Savage currently has 704 parking spaces in it. I took a, a couple of visits over there, and at any one particular day, it was only half-full. But they're going to be building a rather large commercial and residential area right there in that particular location along railroad tracks. So, any argument that we would care to make about trying to take the racetrack stop proposed and maybe switching with that Savage stop because it's underfilled, is going to be eaten up for the same thing that we're being eaten up with, development and people that are going to need the train. So, as long as we are being told to stay off the roads, don't congest the cities, it appears to us that the state and CRX has to do something to cooperate with us to provide public transportation so that we meet that agenda. And the only way we can really see doing it is for the state to build us a parking garage, leave our stop where it is, and we're going to be building, Howard County's going to be building. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast these days. People want to get out of the cities, they want to live out here. C Street Flats is a perfect example of that. They weren't even, the doors weren't even open, and they were totally sold out. So, if you see that and you see what we're seeing as far as buildings and people wanting to come out here and live in this particular jurisdiction, this area, we've got to keep on beating on these people to make them understand that we need that train. And we need public transportation in order to have the people, the professional people that are traveling in and back and forth between Baltimore and Washington and other areas in between, the college kids that are living in C Street Flats, they go to College Park, they're taking master's courses down there, and they need the train in order to get there because they don't have a car. So, I mean, we're still in the fight, we're going to stay in the fight, and like I said, we don't have a lot. Maybe we should meet from now on every two months like this is in order to give you updates, unless we have something, then we could call the meeting. But at this particular time, I'll take any questions that anybody has. Or any suggestions. Come forward, if you would.
I just wanted to mention, you're from Howard County. I actually live in the Howard County, I consider Laurel my town. And there are actually quite a few of us, I'm just up north Laurel, you know, across Route 1, go up on the hill. There are a lot of people there that can walk to the station, or if they don't feel like walking, would drive there. I would prefer to come to the Main Street station than have the new station. I certainly, in fighting, could not have that station lost because it means a great deal to a lot of us Howard County people, who are actually Laurel residents just as well. So, again, on that survey, they're just assuming these are outsiders. They're not necessary. Some of whom are people who very much orient to the city of Laurel and would be very, very unhappy with their own county if they take, pardon, take the train station from there. As far as Howard County goes, I'll write to Kittleman, support him that, you know, I do live in Howard County. I don't like this, and I expect them to respect the history of Laurel the same as they would respect the Savage building, the solid city, and other historical sites. Does the Howard County Council or Planning Board get involved in this at all? Does it warrant writing to them, or is that too low?
I don't think it hurts to write to anyone. I would encourage it, but right now, I don't want anybody to beat up on Mr. Kittleman because he's actually being our friend.
Well, I would write a nice letter.
Yes. I mean, it didn't take much, other than a couple of phone calls, and next thing you know, it was like, we're going to meet with you. So, we just, we didn't, I guess we just didn't see the need to do that before because it was his development. But once we got to talking to his representatives and explained the whole picture as we saw it, I think they suddenly realized too, that they're in trouble. That even if you have a split stop, that's not going to take care of all the other things that he's got up the track and the other buildings and the other structures that he's going to be building along that. Route 1 corridor is a very hot corridor. They call it 95 corridor, but it's, to me, it's a, it's a Route 1 corridor. So, I think we've got to stay on it. Ms. Mills and I and Donna, and we meet, we have a conference call eight o'clock tomorrow morning, we're going to be on a conference call with the MDOT, and then we meet with them every other couple of weeks in person. So, we're gathering all this information, we're going to put it in front of them, and we're going to put it in front of CRX.
You don't have any, I'm sure you've followed this and done it, but there isn't any information on how much of an impact on, like, the Laurel Tavern, Rainbow Forest and all from people walking up and down Main Street?
It's very difficult to put a number on something like that because, I mean, it would take, you know, searching their files and try to figure out where the business comes from, and people these days, they're trying to make a living, and they don't really have the time to do that. And their, their computers are not set up to really do analyses like that. But we know, we know from just being here on the street and knowing our residents and knowing our businesses, that it's got to affect them.
It seems like it, because you see a huge number of people in the morning walking down Main Street, going to the station.
Yeah. I didn't bring it with me, but in the past, we have materials from the Save Our Stop effort that has the list of all the people, including the planning people for Howard County. If you can email me that, your address, I mean, I'll be glad to just forward that to you, you know, where you can write that nice, that nice letter, which I think is important.
Yes.
Okay, it's, right.
I can easily get it myself.
Yeah, I mean, I have it with addresses and all that stuff set together.
Okay, one thing I, one thing I knew that, and I will make sure to not have a hospital, but just say, I live in Howard County, and I feel very screwed about this, and I appreciate the fact that...
And I think there'll be an article in the Laurel Leader, if it's not this Thursday, it'll probably be next week. One of the reporters called me the other day and wanted to know, couldn't be here tonight, wanted to know if there was any new information, so I shared with him what I've been telling you all. So, we are, we're all going to be moving forward with it and stay on top of it and try and make it happen.
You know, the other thing that Ed mentioned, which I think is very important for everyone to realize that, that right now, MDOT is sort of looking more strongly at the split stop issue, and that's part of the benefit of having both County Executive Kittleman and the City of Laurel Council President together advocating for the two stops, that for neither of them will the split stop, neither of us will the split stop be a good solution. I mean, it's not any good for Howard County, it's not any good for us, and that's what makes that really important.
And the county, Prince George's County, is doing the same thing, and I'm trying to get Mr. Frome to get enough information from us to put something in front of County Executive Baker so that maybe we can get him on board. He's been very silent on this issue, except for this one statement. Yes, sir, come forward.
For split stop, you mean some trains stop at the racetrack and some stop in Laurel?
That's correct.
Right. Think about that as a commuter nightmare.
And they're proposing buses, and I mean, we all know, we've watched it, when some people get off that train, they have children to pick up at certain times, at certain locations, and if they're not there on time, they get charged extra money by the minute, I'm told in some instances. And there are other people that have got other obligations and have to get there, so I cannot really see people standing around over at the racetrack just twiddling their thumbs and waiting for the next bus to come through. So, we're fighting to see that that doesn't happen. I think it's fair to say, from what we've been hearing lately, is that they've given up on the footpath. The $10 million that was proposed to do that is, they could build us a parking garage for that $10 million. A very nice parking garage, I might add.
I think one of the other things that we shouldn't forget is also pushing the issue of the double-decker.
That's correct.
Rail cars, not only with Howard County, but with MDOT, because you can, you know, obtain such higher-level passenger travelers that would solve a lot of the issues if we could do that.
And that's what County, not County, but Deputy Secretary Schrader's trying to get that information now for Senator Rosenpepp, is to, you know, what is, we know what our ridership is now, but what is the potential capacity? What can they, what they can, what they, what can they handle tomorrow? And if they can't handle anything tomorrow, then they've got to find a way to put more, MDOT has to find more ways to put either double-deckers or single cars on these trains, so when these people come, there's a way for, or a place for them to sit without standing like a trolley car.
This actually wasn't Kittleman's project at the racetrack.
Yeah.
So, he doesn't really have a dog in this hunt, so another reason for him. It's good economic for Howard County.
It's good economics.
But it wasn't his project being brought forward.
Right. Michael? Turn your mic on, please.
We need to understand that the planning board in Howard County, as was pointed out to me, and I, I don't know whether I accept that, that Kittleman does not have a lot of interaction with the planning board in Howard County. Josh is currently the chair, although he's, his time is up, they don't have a replacement, so he stays on. Understanding how Park and Planning Commission works and how the City of Laurel Planning Commission works, and how the one in Prince George's County works, in my mind, I'm having trouble reconciling that Mr. Kittleman hasn't had some discussion with Josh about this project. That's what was told to us at the meeting last week. So, when you write a letter to Josh, and he's the chair, they're continuing to review part pieces of this plan for what's going on over here at the racetrack as we speak. So, don't assume that he has in fact talked to County Exec Kittleman, so you might want to make some of the same arguments you made, what you make with your letter to Kittleman. That's all I'm suggesting. And again, I, I deal with Mary Kay Sigatay. She covers Columbia. This is not even her area down here. She was not even aware this was happening. At that point in time, she was in fact the chair of the County Council in Howard County. So, again, it seems to be a little disjointed to me, where there's a lack of communication. She took an interest once I mentioned it to her. But again, it seems to understand, you know, how did it get this far in my mind, you know, without somebody coming to President of the Council or to the mayor and say, hey, we've got this thing going on, and we're trying to figure out the rationale for a stop at, what do they call it, Laurel Park Stop now, I think, Park or whatever it is. I mean, I went up there and sat one morning. Nobody got on the train. There's no lights there, it's a rickety stairway to get up there, but nobody flagged the train down. So, I'm sure that if they had buildings there, they'd have people getting on. And that brings me to the last issue. They proposed to build 1,000 structured parking spaces. Let's assume for a minute they took the stop away from Laurel. That means you're going to move 800 cars up there, and for the whole development up there, you're only going to add 200? Doesn't make sense to me. But again, I think these are things that haven't been thought out real well in the planning for the project up at the racetrack.
Well, I think we're beyond that point now, because all the, all the five options that we were looking at when this started June the 1st of last, of this year, all those five options have been whittled down to one, and they're now leaning very heavily toward the split stop, and that's what we're trying to stop. So, any other questions? Yes, sir, come forward. I seen you outside the church.
Anyway, I want to, how did those three work, and how they work in the bigger picture? What we're talking about.
That's when they established Amtrak, 1970. And when they divided passenger from freight, one of the basic driving forces was the passenger should have right-of-way. Okay? But that's not what's happened. They get windows from the freight companies. And I'm not, but again, they can be bumped if the freight is late getting there, or they're impeding on the line, all kinds of issues. And as you know, when you, I mean, I rode this, I rode the Camden line for many years. It gets to be 100 degrees, and they can't go move faster than 70, what? It gets to be 100 degrees, and they can't go move faster than 70, what? Sometimes 15 miles an hour. It has to do with the tracks not lining properly. Because they're not, it's not in good shape. The road bed is not in good shape for passenger rail that's moving at a high speed. It's better for freight that's moving at a lower speed. So again, that the, but to add that third track is very expensive. And that's where the rub comes in because the passenger lines don't make any money. They don't have the money to do it. The money's all made on the freight side. It wasn't federal government to pay for it. You know, it's that endless pot of money that the government, federal government has. I think that's what the issue is. You need to remember, this is one of the oldest lines in the country. And that sort of gets lost in discussion about what was this line? This line was for freight, it was for passengers for more than 140 years.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll keep you all, yes, sir, come forward.
Well, this is a very serious conversation, so I want you to lighten it up just to do that.
Why don't you come out up here so everybody can hear you?
I promise that while we're going to say his name, I can't... Several years ago, Jim Rosapeci and I talked about transportation. And I happen to be one of those peculiar people that think light rail should have run down I C C, it should have crossed at Merck Park, gone over to B W I Parkway and all the way up to the airport. Get on light rail at, over in Montgomery County, you go all the way to Hunt Valley off of the fee for light rail in Baltimore. So I'm going to come back to build and set rails over top of the tracks that are already there. So there is no need for a new road bed and acquisition of additional land. And you run a light rail from either the subway interchange down at the Beltway, or you go all the way into Washington. And you run that light rail all the way to where you can pick up the light rail coming out of Baltimore so that traffic can then be served all day long because you're not interfering with CX freight rail. You have your own tracks, and we can get full-time, not 24/7, but certainly more rail service and more service than what we're getting at present time. So if you want to go into DC, you don't have to catch that 702 train in the morning. It would be possible to go over and pick the light rail at 11, 11:30, 1, 2, and get that same time of transportation back. Now, I understand when you want to talk about doing that kind of thing, it very much upsets rural transportation because they seem, use a little French, help out on modifying where we are as opposed to thinking about where we can go. So that we could put a overhead with a walk-up the steps or use the elevator at Merck Park at the racetrack, at Laurel, all of up and down this, and run seven, eight, nine, 10 trains a day as opposed to what we're doing. Second question. Has Anarosa County got involved in this conversation?
No, because they're not affected by it.
Well, they're not, but they can be a big ally because as you ride down Whiskey Bottom Road, and as you ride down that whole section over there, townhouses are being built as fast as they can load the lumber. So Rockbridge Road down to 32, Whiskey Bottom Road across to 198, all of that's under construction. Those are some likely riders for that train track. And I doubt if it's going to be long before all of a sudden you're talking about Laurel, Howard County being counted in that number. All of a sudden, everyone just got getting that development all up and down that area over there. In addition, they are talking about some very serious building down at Jessup that's been in the mill for 10 years or so. So just throw another snowball on the fire.
In all candor, I have looked at that, and we've talked about it. And in all candor, those people over in that Anarosa County side are probably going to go to the racetrack and get, and take up those 200 spots that Mike was talking about at the racetrack. Because that's where it's going to be closer. They won't come to Laurel.
Yes, they will be eligible to go to those 200 spots before that complex that's going to take 10 years that they're talking about building is going to be completed. And that project, I did not miss a planning meeting of Howard County. The County Council is actually the planning board in Howard County. I did not miss one of those meetings in 2003. And there was conversation of that section being built over there as far back as that. The plans for the development of Route 1, starting down in Elacott City and coming this way, were also discussed, planned, pictures, drawings, and et cetera. The closing of both of the mobile home parks on Route 1, the disposition with the mobile home park in behind the motel there, and the development all the way from Elacott City to Luke Bridge and the river, the Hudson River, was all part of the discussion. So that project's been kicked around for...
Yeah, but the trouble is they're coming to fruition now.
Well, I understand that.
And that's part of the argument.
And not only is it going to be that, it's going to be a lot, we're talking about Fossumon, and we start talking about Cherry Lane and Fourth Street, and we start talking about, there is going to be tremendous growth, and there is going to be a need, greater need for that train station than the 800 that it's serving right now. New story, you put light rail up there, you run trains all day long.
I think you've got to convince Governor Hogan not to do the levitation train first. He's trying to get 28 million for that just to study it. With that, if there's no other questions, thank you all for coming out tonight. At least it wasn't raining, and we look forward to seeing you next. We're going to skip December, we'll go to January. Everybody got busy with the holidays, if that's okay? If we have something, we'll put it out, but if we don't, I'll see you in January. Thank you very much.